Looked to have a public hearing.
Now, let me clarify that. If the new ordinance is adopted and there is not a successful referendum on it, that does include a provision that repeals the 2017 ordinance because there would of course be no point of having both of them on the books. So the only way this ambiguity about the whether the 2017 ordinance is effective or not now is if the new ordinance passes, there's a successful referendum on it, so it doesn't go into effect, and so the 2017 regulations are still on the books with this ambiguity about whether they are or are not effective because of the defects in the adoption procedures.
So what effectively did I just?
Need to get it.
Right, but what?
The primary review question was if we would have approved the first ordinance, then they referendum it in 2017, we stripped that out, that saving clause is gone.
Okay, so if we have a public hearing on just the 2017, you get it? Gone, okay, and we decide as a group to take that out of the equation so we can be productive, then what happens? Then we recommend it to the board and they deal with it, right?
Yes.
And I think what he's saying is if we should be doing that repeal concurrent with the new ordinance so that it's the ambiguity that goes away.
Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not.
Well, if you have a new one at the gates, the 17 one, repealing now. If she can, if she can have.
It'd be real helpful if I weren't interrupted every time I speak.
Right.
Um, right now, the new ordinance, the new wind energy ordinance.
For this one right here?
Yeah, okay, that ordinance has within it a repeal of the 2017 ordinance, okay? So if this ordinance is adopted and is not subject to referendum, or even if it is subject to referendum, if the referendum fails, the 2017 ordinance will go away and this will be your wind energy ordinance. However, if there is a referendum on this ordinance, it will also referendum the repeal of the 2017 ordinance. The repeal will not go into effect either. And so the 2017 will stay on the books with this ambiguity about whether it is or is not effective because of the defects in the adoption procedure, which is part of the reason I put them in the separate ordinance, to remove that ambiguity and to give citizens that opportunity to referendum of which they were deprived initially. Now, you decided not to let them do that, okay? So we're gonna be left for the ambiguity. I have tried to say many times, I don't think that is a good outcome, okay? You can make that decision to have that outcome of that remaining ambiguity. And that's what it will be if there's a referendum on the new ordinance in its entirety and there's no saving clause in this other ordinance.
The 2017 was the entire savings clause that you're talking about?
Yes, and when I say savings clause, the point was if this goes down because of the referendum, the savings is you have something there on the books that has been properly adopted and there'd be no question about that. Now, they might very well referendum both of them at the same time, in which case you're still with that ambiguity.
Well, but that's why the 2017 isn't gonna fly. I mean, nobody, they would, if, that one will get referendum. If we tie it to this, they're both gonna go down. I'm trying to save something here.
I understand the practical considerations. It is a legal matter and I can't predict what's gonna happen with IRIs or whether they're gonna be successful or not, but it is in my opinion a better situation if the new ordinance goes down, to have something on the books while you do a new moratorium to work on our improvement, okay? You don't have to follow that advice. That is my advice.
How are we gonna have an ordinance? We don't know about the airspace and the lakes.
Uh, let's, um, what are we gonna do about the, the second one?
So my, well, my question requires, to go back to his point, we have a moratorium now in place until August 1st. So the fact that right now we're in the ambiguity, as long as we get a solution before August and hopefully we'll have feedback on the airport and all the other stuff there, that's really our time constraint on getting this corrected, adjusted, revised, whatever, however we wanna word it.
So the, the second ordinance we forwarded on and we took that out. Now, do we take, uh, we have to recommend that to the full board without that in there, correct, Ron?
Well, you just made a decision that going this, if and when you ultimately recommend this to the board, it's not gonna have that section two.
It'll, we don't recommend it to the board, it goes on to the county planning commission from here.
Well, certainly, but the motion you pass at this stage is not gonna be to rec, to send it to the county planning commission. That's just a statutory procedure that's followed. Your motion is going to be to recommend something to the board, whatever it may be.
On the second.
Well, both of these ordinances, but right now, based on the X U test, the second ordinance will not include that savings clause in section two.
Which is the second ordinance for this one?
The shorty.
The short one has the 2017.
The short one?
The one that has 2017 savings clause in it.
The one down here?
Yeah, the one with the site lighting and the site plan and establishing chapter 21.
So we're taking that tomorrow in the House, we're running it tonight at least.
I mean, to send it though, or by voting to take that out, we already voted to accept it and send it?
We have to send it.
Right, that's what I mean.
You don't have to send it, and I would recommend you don't until you've got both of these together, yeah. So right now you're just passing a motion, okay, this is how we're gonna move forward, whether that's the planning commission or the board.
So we're good with the second one then? We've basically taken the 2017 clause out of it. We need to talk about the big ones. Oh, until we get good maps, is there a good?
Well, I think there were a couple other questions about it though.
Yeah.
If I'm hearing time correctly, you have a lot?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that there needs to be a map overlay that we can clearly see. One is the new float airport at Clifford Lake. The other one is all of the lakes captured, which we just talked about adding Christina and Hemingway to that list. And then the other item that's on here, I'm trying to find the article, is regarding line of sight from existing cell towers, because I believe that line of sight, it's, um, on page 22, under the electromagnetic interference, it was item number two. That one specifically stated.
Hold on Tammy, just, uh, that's in your version that you put commas?
No, it's the same, no, it's the same one that was circulated. Numbering's not changed.
It paginates differently when you put those commas in there, so it's not on page.
Oh, mine is.
Um, it's on.
Twenty one.
Twenty one?
Yeah.
Yes, under the electromagnetic interference.
Yeah, it starts on page 21 and the, uh, and the rest of the commission is.
Yep, sorry.
That's exactly what I was talking about earlier.
Yeah. So line two, this one specifically says any located, and it has nothing to do with interference in the way this is drafted, this one specifically says within the line of sight.
Yeah, which is, that's very debatable.
So, line of sight one is debatable, but for two, line of sight likely will take out our entire township north of McRide Road, all the way to the west because from Stanton you can see the tower clear over by Fitzner Road.
Yeah.
So I think that's where I'm struggling with, to the point of, a wind ordinance is one thing, exclusion is another, but when you start taking these isolations out, I don't know how much land mass is actually left.
Not much.
Does it matter?
It does, it does.
So I think we need to have a map that shows us what all of this is and whether it's a specific zoning, a zoning overlay, what that area really looks like and which the turbines are, because that could impact a lot of this ordinance.
Tammy, how are we gonna get that map?
You know how they are?
That's why I was looking at the planning call. Um, I mean, other than for us driving around in our cars, can we see Knob Hill, can we see?
I can tell you from Lake Macon, you can see the house from our house.
We can do the lake separation easily.
Right.
I don't know that we can do line of sight, but I, I would point out in paragraph two, it doesn't just say line of sight, but there's a caveat there where operation of wind system is likely to produce electromagnetic interference.
But the likely is almost too discretionary though, I think then people are gonna.
I think maybe we, uh, Ron and I can talk about this, but maybe we can tighten that up so there's some more objective criteria. Uh, but my point is that it doesn't just mean that if, if they can see a cell tower from proposed location, that automatically eliminates that as a potential location.
But the way this is worded now, it would indicate that.
I think we can go back and, and take a look at that.
And then I.
We don't wanna change it because that is the whole case. If, if you can see the tower, that means then it will affect the wireless internet.
Well, that's what we don't know.
Well, I do know that then. That's what I do for a living. I mean, come on, I'm trying to tell you guys, that's what I do. It's, it's gonna affect it. It, it just does.
This is a real unfortunate question here. I mean, there, there has to be some limiting factor on that though, because assuming you got something six miles apart and there's still conceivably line of sight if they're tall enough, is that, is it still gonna interfere with?
Well, and the reason I'm, I'm asking the question as well, because you know 5G was all over the news lately, right? And how that rolled out?
Yeah.
And even the Atlanta Airport, one of the busiest airports in the world, they only did turn the 5G on within two miles of the airport. That's why I don't know this line of sight versus area of influence and impact, that's what I don't know.
See, the problem is, is wireless frequency is 2.4, which that's what they, the wireless internet providers use, they use a 2.4, and that is what they use for that. So the problem is, is that uses line of sight, okay? That's the problem. If you, if you put this windmill in between that line of sight, it will distort and it will ruin the, the radio waves that goes to the house and it will distort the signal and then your internet will not work. And that's the problem. And that's why, that's why we need this clause and we need to not change it. Because if we change it, then all these people are gonna, their wireless internet's gonna be affected.
So my question is, that's really has to do with megahertz being with all of that stuff kind of all goes together.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, I specifically said, I think we need to get a specific sound consultant to review this, to make sure that we don't have things misconstrued. Is LMAX right, is the other one right? And I did not have support from this planning commission to have a consultant look at it, because there's several items in here, but I'm like, how are they even gonna do that? Like, the sound report, they, they want four days. Well, which four days are you gonna pick? When they're running their car drives from October, November, are we gonna run the sound task during May when everybody's out planning? Oh, let's run it when the drag strip's going, three miles away in day township. And I hear that in my backyard. Like, four days of sound study, I'm not understanding the means and methods of how this is done. And that's why I wanted a consultant that can review this, analyze it, and help us do that, and I was shot down of asking for that.
Cause I wasn't here. I might have supported you. You guys didn't let me in here. You did it. You guys all said, we texted each other, and I said, I can't be there on that day, and you guys said, oh, it's fine, well, we don't need you. I was like, come on, it was basically a scenario like, ah, I told you I was on vacation. I would have supported you, Tammy.
So that, that's one of, that's just one of my numerous questions, right? This is getting into where there's so many things and I'm like, four days, and then they wanna post construction. What do we do if the decibel, if the ambient noise on any given property or we're trying to protect somebody and their ambient noise is already at 50? Like, I don't, you know how noisy my swamp gets with frogs and birds? They're at 65, 70, so they're not, I'm just.
Adjust that so it doesn't, you don't go off onto a road that doesn't matter. The ordinance is not structured in a way where that matters. You are testing for turbine, turbine noise only when you do the post-construction sound study. And so even if there is a background of 60, you subtract that out and you can find out what the turbine noise is adding to that equation, okay? And they are capable of doing this. This is why these sound provisions are written so exacting. Um, this was done at other projects. They know the signature quality of the noise from a turbine, so even though you're collecting all noise, you can determine what is the turbine only noise and make sure that is what is or is, is or is not below the 45 threshold. So it doesn't matter if the surrounding, uh, territory is already ambiently louder, you can't add 45 turbine noise only to it.
Yeah, so Tammy, so basically, so like, maybe the sound guy over there explaining better than me, but, so you've got, let's say you got 12 noises that the mic's picking up, so you got your frog noise, okay? We'll put that in there. You got your car noise, they already, the computer knows what all the noises are. So then what you do is you just swipe it and you take that out of the equation, just, and take that out of the equation. And then there's this one noise, it's wind, and they know what that sounds like cause they've got other recordings of it, and then that's what they're looking at. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, but there's some provision, some of this is related to tonal as well, when you start talking, the megahertz is more tonal, but everything is referencing the ambient. So I guess my question is, there was enough conflicts in here that I did not feel, having thrown this big monstrosity in January, that I understood enough of this information that it wasn't conflicting each other.
I think I did read at this point, I did a little more research. The LMAX, I don't know that, that's.
LMAX is in virtually all of the, all of the ordinances. They're all going for LMAX. That just means that they can't, it can't be averaged out there. Yeah, it's, it's like, that's the maximum amount, and you gotta have, you gotta have a maximum amount.
My other question as well is.
Cause they're gonna shut them down if they're too loud.
We're all worried about complaints, right, and managing complaints. And I don't know that four days, right, in existing conditions is adequate when we're looking at over the course of a year and the variance decibel levels that we have. Like, how are we supposed to manage that? And so, is it really a nuisance, is it not a nuisance? Like, there is an onus on all of us, on this ordinance, on managing it. So those are my concerns.
So basically what I'm getting from everyone here is that we don't wanna do anything with this tonight. We need to give Ron and Paul some guidance. A few things that I have written down are we need a map overlay of the Clifford Lake Airport.
Whatever was approved by the FAA.
Right. All the lakes need to be put in Christine Lake and Hemingway Lake. Uh, Tammy mentioned something about light of, uh, line of sight.
FCC will give you all the information you need on that.
We, uh, we'll have to have some information on that and of what the, um, effects are on cell phones and internet. And, uh, some kind of sound advisory, whether we recommend to the full board to hire a sound professional to come in, or, uh, Paul, do you wanna touch that? Or do you want the township board to touch that?
Uh, well, that's gonna be up to the township board, if you wanna hire somebody to do that. The, my understanding, and I came in after this was drafted, but my understanding is that the, the folks at Spicer were responsible for preparing the bulk of this, and they do have that experience. Uh, so I, I, you'd wanna confirm that you already had an expert prepare this before. You might wanna hire another expert to confirm what they did.
Is there any other items that need to be addressed that we need to give these gentlemen some direction on so we can move forward?
Another thing I have is, can we answer, can we answer a couple of the questions that they had?
Well, we're, we're still working on this ordinance when we get out of that, but they're part of that.
They're contained to it, they're contained to it. I mean, we've done this before, we've, we've allowed a few questions before. Cause we've got public comment.
I, we can go there, but I, I think just as a point of giving us the direction we need, this issue of having another sound expert look at this or not. Um, I think two things, uh, well, need to happen is, one, you need a vote on whether the commission as a whole actually wants that to occur. Uh, if it occurs or not is gonna be dependent on the board's approval, because whether they want to spend that money or not is ultimately gonna be their decision. But whether you want to make that recommendation to the board at this time is something that ought to be clarified so that we can then take that to the board at its next meeting and find out whether they want to authorize that. So before you jump onto that, we're not, not trying to pass, we need to resolve this first.
Yep.
What's the pleasure of the commission, um, having the board?
Yep. The only weird part I thought, think about that is, it's gonna be expensive. And I know that, it's gonna be, yeah, $10,000, and they're gonna be like, nope. So I, I'm just throwing that out there.
So my question is, is there, if Spicer drafted this, is there anybody that we can contact for their work product that we've already paid for to defend it?
Ask Spicer, I would bet, right? So you want the town, the township board to get more influence from Spicer? Well, I'm just saying, they've already spent the money on doing this. So if, if Spicer put it in there, they said, they said that they had experience at it, so. So they must have something to back it up, right?
I think that's an easier, cheaper bet, to just ask them.
Have them defend their work product?
Yeah, give us your proof. Where's your proof? Why, why do we need this? It's not that big. The election cost, cost us hardly anything.
So have Spicer defend their information they have in here.
That's just a simple request.
And you, Tammy, you're concerned particularly with the sound measurement methods that they have specified, right?
Correct. Cause some of the wording is ambiguous, and I wanna make sure from a dispute perspective. The other concern I have that's kind of silent in this ordinance is that we have exempt wind towers, right? Ones that are smaller for personal use, that are exempt from this ordinance, but yet we're also trying to tie them to the sound ordinance. What sound provisions are they gonna, are we gonna require from an exempt tower? Are they gonna be able to say, hey, I bought this little wind turbine on Amazon?
It squeak in.
And it squeak in, but the manufactured product says it's supposed to be at 55 decibels. Like, we're kind of silent and where I'm getting at is it could be our wind ordinance has to be more robust and more lenient on what we're now calling exempt wind with the FAA and everything else that we might need to pivot, and right now that exempt is still tied to sound, but no way for anyone here that wants to get one to meet that burden. It's kind of silent on that. So those are kind of my questions.
And then going back to Spicer, maybe they've got some answer to that.
Well, it's not really a technical issue. The question is, with these commercial grade systems, we're requiring them to do a sound study after they're constructed to prove they comply, okay? So you'll have that in front of you. Exempt turbines, we're not requiring them. So it becomes an enforcement question. If there's a complaint about one of these exempt turbines, it's the township that's then going to have to prove that it's exceeding these limits in the ordinance. Now, that's no different than any other sound complaint, because this court case is holding that a general unreasonable interference standard doesn't hold up in court. Just saying, this noise is a nuisance. There has to be both a subjective and objective, uh, criteria in a noise ordinance to be enforceable. You need, it actually has to objectively exceed some decibel limit and be subjectively annoying somebody to be actionable. So to the extent that, um, we're putting these exempt turbines in that category, this is no different than a problem that exists with respect to barking dogs, loud parties, or whatever use you might have. The township would actually have to prove that there's a certain objective sound problem in order to enforce it. So it may or may not be a problem to you because the small turbines are gonna present same, something that you already deal with with anything that makes sense.
Except we've never got to the bottom of the barking dogs yet halfway. It's through that all. Twenty years we have not got to the bottom of the barking dogs.
It can exceed 45.
It can?
It cannot.
Oh, well then, they're subject to the same standards.
Yeah, so that's the challenge is that, and I know that there's been a lot of passion for people that wanna be able to put small, personally used turbines up on their property, but if we're holding them at 45, if you just go out there randomly and look, they're all at 50 or 55. I'm just saying, you can't say that it needs to meet the decibels in table one, even though it's exempt, knowing 90% of those sizes can't meet that today.
They would have to be set back.
At the property.
At the property. They'd have to be set back for their, or comply.
But they're only, but it's like 120 feet right now in the exempt tower. So we didn't talk about it last month. I think you need, especially those of you that are really familiar with all of the resident, you know, the lakes and everybody's feedback, you really need to look at the height. If you triple it, you look at the property line, how many is really there? That's gonna.
Yeah, the, the lakes, they wouldn't even comply, cause there's not, not, not enough footage. So they can't go in there if they want.
But again, there are ones that only need to be at 20 feet that would do personal use. So I think, again, I'm, I'm assuming that the math analysis is gonna come back and that we need to look at the number of people that have said they think that personally use needs to be a viable option, and right now I don't know that we're addressing that.
Should we change, they saying 55 maybe, or?
No.
You don't wanna go 59, that would be kinda insane.
No, this is the exempt two. So I'm saying, we need to relook at that for conversation, but right now that one is linking to sound and it's limiting it to 45 on the exempt towers. But there is no burden on proof for them to prove that what they install needs 45, and that nuisance is all gonna come back in the township.
Well, the policy question then is, do you want to make personal users do a post-construction sound study? You like to put it in utility grid system?
Guess who's gonna pay for it?
Or do you wanna treat it like every other sound issue in the township, there does not have to be that?
That we have no control over like the barking dogs.
How about stereo?
Yeah, your stereo.
So, we've got five different items for Ron and Paul to look over. Uh, well, actually the sound, um, we need to get with Spicer's to have them defend their information.
And that's really that it's applicable ability to get done. We could get multiple pieces. And then the other comments that I get on that section, we can just go over as a team.
If you need help, if you, if one of you could send to Paul and I whatever link you have to this Clifford Lake FAA determination, so we don't have to spend time searching it out on ourselves. If you've got that, please email it to us.
So, uh, help me out here, Ron. This ordinance, we're gonna work on it more, so tonight's public comment, our public hearing was, um, kind of an informational input from the township, and we're gonna work on this more, revise it, come back and have another public hearing.
Uh, not necessarily. Uh, you don't necessarily have to have another public hearing. Um, that would only be required if there was some significant departure that so significantly disrupted the expectations of the public as what the ordinance contains, that it would be unfair to move forward with it. The type of changes you discuss tonight are so minor in nature that, uh, I don't believe another public hearing would be necessary. In fact, when you think about this process, the whole, the whole concept of a public hearing is that you listen to them and do make some changes. You might believe they do or do not have which points are worth addressing, but the point I'm making is not to say that they're good or bad. My point is from a procedural standpoint, the law contemplates that the reason you have this hearing is you might make some adjustments still before you pass it on to the board. So it's not problematic just because you make changes after the public hearing. It's only if they're so significant in nature that it would completely disrupt the expectations of those who show up to speak, that it's, it's effectively a whole new ordinance. And I don't contemplate that's gonna be the case based on the relatively minor issues you brought up.
FAA, FCC is major, it's not minor, guys. The, uh, second ordinance though, um, that one there.
We're gonna sit on it.
We'll just sit on that also until this one goes through, okay?
Who follows up with Spicer?
You know, the public hearing. That will be, uh, township board follows up Spicer, or you gentlemen?
I'll, I have a relationship with, I'll have a.
So I think my other follow-up question is depending on how these exhibits and these outcomes are. So I think my other follow-up question is depending on how these exhibits and these outcomes are that we see. And I just, this is just for clarity on my side. What your stance is, is that even when we get the map, we get all of this done, whether we're talking it only affects this percent or this percent, the ordinance is still in place. And whether or not it's gonna make a viable sense, that commercial could still be there? And then we can focus on the other items? Is that why you're saying you didn't think this was material, the items we talked about?
What I'm saying is, most of the changes we discussed are not gonna so materially affect the ordinance of public hearing, a new public hearing is necessary. Now, it, it's fairly pointed out that if this information about Clifford Lake, let's say it does actually require a five, five mile radius in all directions, the towers are now impossible. Well, that's a material disruption that's gonna change the, the ordinance. Now, whether that's the case or not, I'll have to look at. I kinda doubt that's the case because even airports, full-scale airports don't have that type of requirement. So I think it's being overstated the impact of that, uh, quite a bit. But, um, we'll look at it and find out for certain. Get to more to the point of your question about this concept of exclusionary. Whether it's totally exclusionary or not, it's just one type of legal challenge you have to concern yourself with. Somebody could still attack the ordinance as being substantively unreasonable because provisions, uh, effectively ren- render, render the, uh, lease provisions useless economically, uh, which was picked up on a court in a recent case that, uh, perhaps the public knows about, which in ordinance, uh, as applied, was in fact invalidated and it was held that the wind company was entitled to turbines of four hundred and eighty-six feet in height. So there is in fact a very recent case that so holds. And it had nothing to do with exclusionary zone. Uh, it had to do with the substantive reasonableness of the ordinance, uh, which, uh, is another grounds of attack. Um, it had to do in that case about variances, whether they were entitled to variances. So my point is, just because your ordinance is not exclusionary, you might allow one turbine in the entire township, that doesn't mean it's insulated from these other type of legal challenges, okay? So nobody should be left with that impression that if you allow one parcel in the township to have one turbine of this height, that that protects you from exclusionary zoning that you're out of the woods. You are not. There are numerous other legal challenges they could mean.
So that goes back when you talked with Spicer as well, when you look at the sound information that was in here. I, I'm personally am not an advocate of the township hiring even at the applicant's expense, the post-construction survey. I believe the township should insulate themselves by having the onus of drafting those reports and others, and we pay for professionals to review that data.
My concern, Tammy, is that, that could not be more off the mark.
I can be convinced otherwise, but I don't have the data and what that looks like.
It is so important that you hire your independent consultant, cause otherwise what you're doing is just relying on somebody else field, somebody.